State your name for the record, please.
Darryl Palmer. Seems we have issues with the animal control yesterday afternoon. One of the properties.
Okay.
I feel that I should come up here and you guys know what took place and I think that something was improper. Attorney, but I just want to let you know that what happened out there. Anyways, I have a property in Spenceville lot. Never done it, I don't have puppies. The dogs have puppies. And she moved them up underneath the vehicle. Go over daily water feet and animals. Evidently moved them up underneath the vehicle. Wasn't aware of that. But anyways, the animal control came by my other property over 51 there from one talks. I was having a telephonic conference with a federal judge and I couldn't get on the phone. Very rude. It's too loud. Guns come out there to mail DNA. I don't know their names, but they've been out there months prior. It seemed like on a weekly basis and making sure dogs or puppies or whatever be intended to. And I finally told them, why you two coming out? So they took pictures, you know, I mean, I hadn't been out for quite some time, I guess maybe a month or two. Well, now they came out yesterday and my employee was there and handed the videos up on my property. They made him sign a waiver stating that either they're going to charge him, I think, six or seven counts of animal cruelty. Or he's going to sign a paper waiver, whatever, to give them the dog, the mother and puppies. And I said, first time they've been called to that property, first time. So the animal control took my puppies, the dog, made him sign the revenge. Sign over. And if he didn't sign over, they're going to charge him for animal cruelty. And there was another statement that Joe, someone, the sheriff told me that they were complaining about water trough. The big old water trough, one chalks line, big old water trough, that keep full of water. So they're cleaning water, they drink water, where are the bottles? It's out in the open, sun up. And he said that need to be in the shade. Animals are fully taken care of, all the vet records, they knew it and it's in. I have all of them. I'm personally going to tell the dog too, that everything's done, everything's up to date on all of them. But for them to walk in and take my dog, Joe's dog, my dog, they're going to call. I want each pet, but they go in and take their dog and the puppies. On the first time they've ever been called, first time they're there, how do I know? You know, there's animals, they have litter of puppies and next thing you know, they go find some are isolated. But for the people that turned me in, or turned him in, or whoever, these puppies were up on his vehicle. They had to be trespassing. They're inside of a chain of fences. And, you know, it's open today, it's empty yesterday, and you guys agree today that maybe we can do something to change it. Have any orders to take?
Now, our attorney, Anthony DeLaGuetti is here, but the animal control was ran by the sheriff's department, not the county council. All right, so I guess we'll check into the situation and see what it is. But again, the sheriff is in charge of animal control, not us.
So who should I follow up with? His man?
You can follow up me. Talk to the sheriff's department.
This is the first place I've talked to. It happened yesterday afternoon, in the first place I've talked to since. You know, I just keep running into the stone wall over there, damn, these two loose cannons is coming out harassing me all the time. This is not right. Just probably want to come up here and adjust to you guys, what's taking place and see what the correct, better avenue is going. Those nuisance.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Yeah.
All right. Need a motion to approve the agenda.
President, if there's no amendments or corrections or changes, I believe we approved the agenda for Thursday, August 12, 2021.
Motion been made. Do we have second? Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Any questions on the purchase order? Since there is none, no internal budget revisions, Mr. Davis?
There are none.
Change in status, we have a change in status received from the sheriff, Nathan Harmon, for Sergeant Yoder to receive a temporary increase to the tenant's pay while performing the tenant's duties effective August 1, 2021, with a pay increase from $59,066 to $69,014. Change in status received from Tim Zia, community corrections director, for Bo Baker to increase his salary from becoming a PRSS certified effective August 1, 2021, with a salary increase from $34,099 to $34,599. Change established received from Will Lawrenson, fiduciary supervisor, to transfer Christina Eisenberg from the assessor's office to the fiduciary office to fill a vacancy of effective August 3, 2021, with a salary change from $35,000 to $40,000. Change in status received from Jennifer Swisher, 911 director, for Paula Wilson, 911 deputy director, for an increase due to years of service, effective August 6, 2021, with a salary change from $65,000 to $66,055. A resignation was received from the prosecuting attorney's office for Casey Putney, a summer intern effective August 6, 2021. Any questions on change in status?
Mr. President, if I may, the transfer Christina Eisenberg, that is a lateral transfer. She's agreed to stay at the hourly rate that she's earning now, but she's going from a 35-hour week to 40-hour.
Yeah, I would just start going 12 and 1/2 percent.
We are treating it as a lateral transfer.
All right, we have the minutes. Everyone was present for July 29, 2021. Any changes or corrections on those? County council calendars will be here this coming Thursday on the 19th. And let me see, on the boards and commissions, we have fire board tonight, 6:30 PM, here in the chamber, on Monday the 16th, 4 PM. Health board, 4 PM, Eastern Pan, Transit Authority, 5:30, Main Street Martinsburg, 6 PM Airport Authority, 6 PM Planning Commission. Tuesday the 17th, 9 AM, WRNR, which would be me. 11:30 AM Parks and Rec, 5 PM Sewer District, 6 PM Stormwater District. Wednesday, the 18th, at 1:30, HEP MPO, and 6 PM Solid Waste Authority. Any changes or corrections to boards and commissions?
The health board is by Zoom, I think, and the hepmo is in person, but I don't know where it is.
I don't remember.
Well, I got to, I didn't say where, want to have a meeting and didn't say where it was. We can find out by the end.
Yeah.
Also, the Main Street Martinsburg meeting that is on the 16th, just to note that that will be Randy's last official meeting. So, you know, anybody that wants to, you know, make comments or whatever, you know, that's going to be his last meeting before he steps down. So they are working to get a replacement and hopefully that'll happen here within the next couple of weeks.
Mr. President, if I may, as the council is aware, West Virginia Code 11-3-24BE states that this council must set as the forward assessment appeals no later than October 1st. And you have the month of October, they don't hear any appeals that were filed on or before February 20th of the tax year. We have received seven commercial appeals. We have no residential appeals. Several of them are represented by the same company, Ryan Innovations, or Ryan Innovate, the solutions for taxi problems. Typically, you would hear these on Thursday afternoon. These are commercial cases, so we know that it's going to take more than one afternoon. Do you want to do them on Thursdays? Do you want to do them, do you want to set aside a day separate from the council meeting? I'm asking you now only because we have to make the state of West Virginia aware of when you intend to do. So you're not going to get them all done in one, if you do them on Thursday afternoon, you're not going to get them all done on a Thursday afternoon.
Can we do them on two Thursday afternoons?
You can.
I prefer going on that if I can, if they're bloody.
We'll start the second, verify with the assessor's office, their bill, will we like to start with the second Thursday now?
14, 21st?
Yeah.
And evidently moved up underneath the vehicle and wasn't aware of that. But anyways, the animal control came by my other property over fifty-one there from one talk. Well, I was having a telephonic conference with a federal judge and I couldn't get on the phone, but he was very rude. He's too loud. His hands come out there to mail DNA, I don't know their names, but they've been out there months prior, it seemed like on a weekly basis, and making sure dogs or puppies or whatever they intend to do. And I finally told them, I said, why you two coming out? So they took pictures, you know, I mean, they hadn't been out for quite some time, I guess maybe more too. Well, now, they came out yesterday and my employee was there and handed me his stuff on my property. But I hope, but regardless, they made him sign a waiver stating that either they're going to charge him, I think, six or seven counts animal cruelty, or he gonna sign a paper waiver, whatever, to give them the dog, the mother and puppies. And I said, first time they've been called to that property, first time. So the animal control took my puppies, the dog, made him sign the revenge, they signed over. And if he didn't sign over, they're going to charge him for animal cruelty. And there is another statement that Joe, someone there told me that they were complaining at water trough, the big old water trough, one chalks line, big old water trough, they keep full of water, so they clean the water, they drink water, wear the bottles, it's out in the open, sun, and he said that needed to be in the shade. Animals are fully taken care of, all the vet records, they knew it and it's, I have all of them, I personally went and told the dog too, that everything's done, everything's up to date on all of them. But for them to walk in and take my dog, Joe's dog, my dog, they're going to call that, one each, technically, but to go in and take a dog and the puppies, on the first time they've ever been called, first time they're there, how do I know, you know, there's animals, they have litter of puppies, and next thing you know, they go find some are isolated. But for the, for the people that turned me in, or turned him in, or whoever, these puppies were up under the vehicle, they had to be trespassing, they're inside of a chain of fences. And, you know, it's open today, it began, it's empty yesterday, and you guys agree today, that maybe we can do something to change it and have an order this day.
Now, our attorney, Anthony De La Gede, is here, and, but the animal control was ran by the sheriff's department, not the county council. All right, so, um, I'm, uh, I guess we'll check into the situation and see what it is, but again, the sheriff is in charge of animal control, not us.
So who do, who should I follow up with? Is man?
You can follow up me, talk to the sheriff's department.
This is the first place I've talked to. It happened yesterday afternoon, in the first place I've talked to since, I just, you know, I just keep running, there's a stone wall over there down, these two loose cannons is coming out harassing me all the time. This is not right, I just probably want to come up here and adjust to you guys, what's taking place, and see what the correct, better avenue is going, because I'm helping them as nuisance.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, anyone else for public comment?
Yeah.
Need a motion to approve the agenda.
President, if there's no amendments or corrections or changes, I believe we approved the agenda for Thursday, August the twelfth, twenty twenty-one.
Motion been made, do we have second, second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Any questions on the purchase order? Since there is none, no internal budget revisions, Mr. Davis?
There are none.
Change in status, we have a change in status received from the sheriff, Nathan Harmon, for Sergeant Yoder to receive a temporary increase to, uh, to lieutenant's pay while performing lieutenant's duties effective August first, two thousand twenty-one, with a pay increase from fifty-nine thousand sixty-six dollars to sixty-nine thousand two fourteen. Change in status received from Tim Zia, community corrections director, for Bo Baker, to increase his salary from becoming a PRSS certified, effective August, um, August first, two thousand twenty-one, with a salary increase from thirty-four thousand ninety-nine dollars to thirty-four thousand five ninety-nine. Change in status received from Will Lawrenson, fiduciary supervisor, transfer Christina Eisenberg from the assessor's office to the fiduciary office to fill a vacancy of effect, effective August third, twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one, with a salary change from thirty-five thousand to forty thousand. Change in status received from Jennifer Swisher, nine-one-one director, for Paula Wilson, nine-one-one deputy director, for an increase due to years of service, effective August sixth, two thousand twenty-one, with a salary change from sixty-five thousand two oh one to sixty-six thousand four fifty-five. A resignation was received from the prosecuting attorney's office for Casey Putney, a summer intern, effective August sixth, two thousand twenty-one. Any questions on change in status?
Mr. President, if I may, um, the transfer Christina Eisenberg, um, that is a lateral transfer. She's agreed to stay at the hourly rate that she's earning now, um, but she's, she's, um, going from a thirty-five hour work week to forty hour work week.
Right.
So it is.
Yeah, I would just start going twelve and a half percent.
We are treating it as a lateral transfer.
Yeah. All right, we have, um, the minutes, everyone was present for July twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one, any change or corrections on those? County council calendars, uh, will be here this coming Thursday, uh, on the nineteenth. And let me see, on the boards and commissions, we have fire board tonight, six-thirty PM here in the chamber, on Monday the sixteenth, four PM, health board, four PM Eastern Pan Transit Authority, five-thirty, Main Street Martinsburg, six PM Airport Authority, six PM Planning Commission, Tuesday the seventeenth, nine AM WRNR, which would be me, um, eleven-thirty AM Parks and Rec, five PM Sierra District, six PM Stormwater District. Wednesday, the eighteenth, at one-thirty, uh, H E P MPO, and six PM Solid Waste Authority. Any change or corrections to boards and commissions?
Uh, the health board is, uh, by Zoom, I think, and the Hepmo is in person, but I don't know where it is.
I don't remember.
Well, I got to, I would, but didn't say where, wanted to have a meeting and didn't say where it was.
We can find out.
Yeah.
The, uh, also, the, uh, Main Street Martinsburg meeting that is on the sixteenth, um, just to note that that will be, uh, Randy's last official meeting, so, you know, anybody that wants to, um, you know, make comments or, or whatever, you know, that's, that's going to be his last meeting for, uh, before he steps down, so they are, uh, working, uh, to get a replacement, and hopefully that'll, that'll happen here within the next couple weeks.
Mr. President, if I may, as the council is aware, West Virginia Code eleven dash three dash twenty-four B states that this council must set as the forward assessment appeals no later than October the first, and you have the month of October, they don't adhere to any, uh, appeals that were filed on or before February twentieth of the tax year. Um, we have received, uh, seven commercial appeals, we have no residential appeals. The, several of them are, are represented by the, the same company, uh, Ryan Innovations, or I try and innovate the solutions for taxing problems. Typically, you would hear these on a Thursday afternoon, um, these are commercial cases, um, so we know that it's going to take more than one afternoon. Do you want to do them on Thursdays? Do you want to do them, do you want to set aside a day, separate from the council meeting? Um, I'm asking you now only because we have to make the state of West Virginia aware of when you intend to do them. So, um, you're not going to get them all done in one, if you do them on a Thursday afternoon, you're not going to get them all done on a Thursday afternoon.
Can we do them on two Thursday afternoons?
You can.
I prefer going on that if I turn with their bodies.
We'll start, um, the s- the second, verify with the assessor's office, their bill, 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 we'd like to start with the second Thursday, now, October.
Fourteenth, twenty-first.
Yeah, fourteenth, twenty-first, if you're available.
Okay.
John, take some time here.
Yeah, I'll check.
All right, thank you.
Yep. We have one cancel check request from the county clerk's finance office, is everybody okay with that? Need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Approve, some movement.
Thank you, Mr. Werker. All right, we got a motion, we got a second, uh, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Good morning, Mr. Hess, have a little activity for us today.
Oh, a lot, oh, two lot. Good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, uh, first thing, there's taxpayer error, we got seven of them, we had to write them up. And all of them are basically, they reported vehicles that be, you know, that they said they sold or got rid of before July one, but they were only returns, so I had to write them up as taxpayer errors. There's seven of them, turns up to four thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars and ninety-six cents. The big ones, they want a top seat in H Capital America, they reported equipment and inventory, and they say now that that equipment and inventory was in Missouri.
Mm-hmm.
But anyway, that's, have to bring it to you that way, so, I got those seven, four thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars and ninety-six cents.
Hey, we have, uh, entertain a motion on the seven personal taxes exoneration due to taxpayer error.
Mr. President, I'm ready to accept the, did you say seven?
Seven.
Uh, taxpayer error, personal property, uh, items for exoneration.
Yeah.
Forty-eight, eighteen ninety-six.
Tag it.
Have a motion on the floor, have a second, uh, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Nay?
Nay.
Nays? All right, so.
Uh, we have, uh, office error, personal property, I have, uh, total looks like sixteen, and they're all for the reasons that's listed there. And we had to correct them, uh, first page, we have the eight, that's got, uh, one thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars and four cents for those eight. Second page, same deal, another eight over there. We totaled them all, they come up to, two thousand seven hundred and ninety-six dollars and eighty-six cents.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the sixteen personal tax exoneration due to, and, uh, due to office error, in the amount of two thousand seven hundred and ninety-six dollars and eighty-six cents.
Motion been made, second, any discussion?
If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries, uh, eight real estate exoneration due to officer.
Yes, sir, I do, and they were mostly for, you know, all taxpayers, uh, home stays not being applied for some reason, but those eight comes up to one thousand, oops, six thousand two hundred and also, those eight come up to six thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars and forty-eight cents.
All right. Entertain a motion on eight real estate tax exoneration due to officer.
So moved.
Motion been made, second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries.
Good. I only have two other consolidations we have to grant to you this week. First one's for Stephen Ashen, they had two portions in the Martinsburg district, uh, map seven, portion eighteen and nineteen point one, and put them together for, just get one tax bill. And the other one for Todd McGee, had, uh, two portions into Jarrettstown district, in map twenty-six, portion twenty-three point twelve and twenty-three point five, same reason going to get one tax bill, so, got those two, the other one consolidated.
Entertain a motion, um, on the two consolidations of properties.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the two consolidations.
All right, motion on the floor, second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Hess. Order, meeting reports, Mr. Barnhart.
Well, thank you, Mr. President, uh, had a, uh, order district meeting on Monday, um, they approved the design plans for the Tabor Station Logistics Park, which is three warehouses, approved the alternate mainline extension agreement for communities of Burwell, which is sixty-one townhouses, they approved the pay application for work completed on the emergency generator project for a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Um, let's see, they, uh, discussed the, uh, operational budget for last year, and they came out, uh, pretty good shape, a hundred and four percent of, uh, budgeted for, uh, income, and, uh, let's see, ah, I think, that was pretty much it. They had an interesting discussion about, uh, payment for the water main with that Tabor Station thing, that, uh, they, give and take, and, uh, to improve the water usage along, uh, Route eleven by, um, Tabor Station LLC giving them permission to put in like a sixteen-inch water main as opposed to twelve, so it worked out both ways, so it was pretty good, and that was pretty much it.
All right, Councilperson Delia.
Uh, yesterday had a, uh, um, had a development authority meeting, for some, I'm, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm going to report on what happened because.
Yes, sir, because I was not present.
You weren't there. Um, the, uh, really nothing, uh, nothing new happened, other than, um, other than, uh, they're working on, uh, job descriptions for a couple of new positions that we had in the works, um, the, uh, um, what's his title, the new guy, um, Patrick Darlington?
Deputy Director.
Deputy Director. He, uh, uh, he's the one putting together those. Um, we have, uh, a couple new prospects on, uh, on, um, businesses locating Berkeley County that we're, um, starting to discuss, as well as, I think there's about seven other ones that are still ongoing. Um, other than that business as usual, um, trying to see what else I had, I think that was all I had, um, this last week, yes.
All right, thank you. Vice President Whitaker.
I had no meetings to report on.
All right.
That's coming up next Monday.
Councilperson Go can.
I also had no scheduled meetings.
Okay.
But we all attended the youth fair.
Yes.
And I left there at, uh, seven o'clock on a Friday, and traffic was backed up on Gulf Coast Road clear, at least the flag's crossing.
Is that right?
Trying to get into that.
We heard at one time that on Friday night, there was a three-hour wait, just to get into Portland.
Is that right?
I went the back way and came through.
Yeah.
Van Cleesville.
Yeah.
And shortly after that, I think everybody else got the idea, so it was backed up.
Coming both ways.
Both ways. Which is a, not a bad thing, I mean, if, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that's only one of four youth fairs left in the United States, youth fair.
Is that right?
One of four.
It shows how the roads are getting stressed, you know, I mean, that's, that's a one-time event, but, I mean, people are walking along the side of the road, and you're trying to drive on it, and, you know, it was, oh, man, it was an accident waiting to happen.
Yeah, I was a tenant at the booth last week.
Well, I, I talked to quite a number of people.
Did you?
Passing by, hey, I, you know.
Oh, you had to holler at them?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and they just would've walked by if I hadn't hollered.
That's a good thing, though.
Well, anything you can do to get their attention.
Right, right. All right, uh.
Uh, pardon, if I may, um, I know I've talked to you all individually, but, um, just want to let you know that collectively, um, your department heads and elected officials are probably busier than we, we've been in the sixteen years that I've been out, but the level of cooperation between departments, um, is, is probably the level that I've never seen before. Um, sheriff's department, prosecuting attorney's office, department's office, um, just, just doing a lot of, a lot of good things.
Mm-hmm.
And I think our elected should be recognized for the efforts that they're making to communicate with your office, um, and to work with, with the various departments, and getting a lot of, a lot of things that have been backlog over the years, really starting to get some, some traction, so, um, you know, the sheriff and the assessor, you know, I mentioned the council president, uh, both in here this morning, um, your facilities department has spent, like, a considerable amount of time and money finally getting the electrical situation in the department's office fixed.
But she's been wanting that for over ten years.
Um, so, just, you know, just, just want to thank your department heads and elected officials for, for all that they're putting, they're, they're working so hard.
Mm-hmm.
And we're busy, uh, but we're doing a lot of good things, Charles, think we take a lesson about.
Yeah.
About how it works together.
Well, that, and we, we spoke earlier about the federal government, wanting to know how Berkeley County gets things done so quickly.
Right.
And, uh, but they're not pulling the rope in the same direction, they're pulling against each other all the time.
So, just, and it all, it all starts with the leadership of this group, so.
And it's taken, it's taken a while to get there.
It has taken very long.
Yeah, and it's taken the, the, um, it, I know we've worked on it for many, many years, trying to build relationships, and sometimes it takes new people in office to do it, and, and, and the people have been able to do that, so.
And I don't know if it's just, and, and it's not just that, it's, it's also part of the, you know, getting everybody in one campus and, and, you know, and everybody working together to be able to, uh, on a daily basis, to be able, you know, forge those relationships too, I think makes a big difference as well.
Yep.
And that, and that's still in the works to.
It's good to have a financial wherewithal to do some of the things that, that we're doing, certainly, you are good stewards of the taxpayers' money, um, but there's been a lot of things, and I'll use the work's office as an example, the certain work's office, things that, you know, we had hoped, we've been wanting to do for years, that, um, unfortunately, are, we do, we had the financial wherewithal to do it, but certainly feeling the impact of the culture fire and things like that right now, so, um, but, it's, it's, you know, I told you before, it's good to be broken right back, so, we're, we're certainly taking advantage of, of this opportunity.
Thank you. Uh, board commission vacancies, any activity there?
Looks like we have, uh, Timothy Johnson to, um, set up an interview.
All right. Did you all point Chris Jones to the Parks and Rec last week?
Yes.
Okay. I shouldn't have been looking all over your way.
I think he'll be a, a, a good, a good partner in that, uh, that whole relationship there.
Yeah, I like the fact that, uh, you know, first thing, really truly, I was not, that he's, he wants to build things, he wants to make things better, you know, so, uh, I had spoke to Chris about him, you know, early on, and Chris knew of him, and, uh, you know, could be a very welcomed asset.
Right. I think there's a vacancy yet from the school board side, which I think that's getting really close to being filled too.
I've got Dr. Gilpin.
No, there's another one that's, that's a vacant right now, yeah.
That's weird.
Well, you said, yeah, Dr. Gilpin's been on there for a while, but there's another seat, I think they got three. So, all right.
Also want to point out to the council that next Tuesday evening is the state's public hearing, or county meeting, or district meeting, um, that starts at six PM at the sheriff's department training room, if any of you are interested, and then also next Wednesday evening, morning or afternoon, we have different times on your calendar, Parker Highways is having their regional meeting. I know Councilperson Go can, our president indicated, um, that he will be attending that. I also want to make you aware of both of those meetings.
I think it's fair to say that all of us would like, love to do all the meetings that we get invited to, but unfortunately, my time is very restricted.
But then if I don't remind you and it comes and goes, then.
Then I, I fully understand, because of the, I mean, there's quite a few meetings I've been missing that I'd like to be there, and just hope people don't take it being disrespectful, that's all. Um, any other appointments, vacancies or anything like that?
Uh, yes, sir, uh, I'd like to reappoint Martin Roberts to the nine-one-one advisory council.
Okay, have a motion on the floor?
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries.
Exactly.
All right, um, that's all we have, really, um. I don't know what, what we're going to do here. Ah, duh-duh-duh, never mind. How you doing? All right, um, I guess we can take a break early and take Deb when she, when we get back, take a quick break. Good. All right, we're back in session. Next on our agenda is Deb Nichols from Berkeley County Emergency Ambulance Authority Exonerations for the month of June. Good morning, ma'am.
Hi, good morning.
Doing well?
Okay, for the month of June, we have nine exonerations, $600, all of which are for district members.
Okay, uh, entertain a motion on nine exonerations, uh, total of 600 bucks.
Got it.
Motion been made second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. It's the easiest job you have.
It is, it is.
All right. Um, I'd like to see where Dan is for this one. Are you sitting on the C V B, Eddie?
Yes, sir.
I think that.
That's staying in the board.
Yeah, drag him in here. This is quiet as groups ever been.
Day's not over yet.
Mm-hmm.
Eddie, how's the hunt for the executive director of the Parks and Rec County?
Yes, sir. Uh, I spoke with, um, Mr. Palmer on Friday, and they had one of their applicants in that they were really down to about two, so they're already men that look at the different parks, uh, speak with the staff. We're getting very close to the bailman choice.
Are either of them local?
I, I don't know for sure. Um, I, I don't know. I was invited to come in and meet him, but it just didn't, the timing of it just didn't work out for me. They're very excited, you know, with the applicants that they have.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah. And, you know, I, it looks like, like Mr. Davis said, you know, their staff has stepped up big time and, uh, taken on a lot of tasks. Got all the programs up and running, you know, maintenance is being done. They're doing a very, very good job.
Yeah, they've already shut Lambert down for the summer.
I, I don't know that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think my wife said something about that.
It has to be within the last two weeks, because I was there.
Oh, it's been the last couple of days, I'm glad.
Oh, okay. Were you calling yourself?
My wife is trying to FaceTime me. I was sitting there saying, really?
She saw you.
I did call her, but.
Um, just to remind you, the council, we do have an interview next Thursday at noon. We're going to have lunch for all of them.
Okay.
So, we'll try to schedule a brief break between your morning business meeting and your executive session.
So, you're saying Dad's going to run the meeting? Where is Dad?
Whatever it is, swallow them up.
The illness is hot.
It was yesterday.
He's not in there? We're back at the meeting room.
All right, let's go. Well, go ahead.
Don't even get behind him. He's not in our suite. Can't be for the form.
All right, next on our agenda is a board and commission interview with Michael Whitrow, candidate for C V B. How you doing, Michael?
Good, how are you guys?
Doing wonderful. Tell us a little bit about yourself that we don't already know and why you want to serve on the C V B, sir.
Um, so I was asked to volunteer to serve on the C V B, uh, due to my knowledge of the community, uh, being raised in Berkeley County, have all connections both to the agricultural side, as well as now having, you know, the forage extension side of it. But being able to have those two and bring something different to the C V B. I'm hoping we'll give some new activities that we can bring to Berkeley County to benefit not just the residents that are already here, but youth members that we could also bring in. Um, I'm always so lucky to be proud of where you come from. This is just another way I can, you know, act upon what I say.
So, what's on the program or what's some of the activities you'd like to see?
Um, one of the best ones I'd like to start is a farm-to-table dinner. Uh, it would be a true community effort. It would require us to work with downtown Martinsburg. I'd like to shut a part of Main Street down. Um, invite seven farmers to bring produce, invite seven chefs to come cook it, and serve the meal straight down the street.
Oh, cool.
It'd be a great way to unite not just the agricultural community, back to the ties of Berkeley County's origins, um, but also to highlight some of those small businesses, but small restaurants that are able, you know, to stay afloat, that bring good businesses to Berkeley County.
Mm-hmm. All right, um, Mr. Barnhart.
Don't you have enough to do?
Yeah, it's just one, another one of those boxes to check. Um, it, you know, I, I really enjoy working for Berkeley County, and this is just another way to serve. Uh, this is, I, I do a lot for what I'm paid for, of course, uh, but this is a way to volunteer and get back in a different way.
Okay.
Is, uh, forage going to, are they doing, uh, youth, uh, camp frame this year?
So, we did not do camp at Camp Frame. We did do camp in a box as well as a virtual component. And we took forty kids to Jackson's Mill for a pod experience. Um, the university did not allow us to do residential camping again this year. Uh, but what we ended up doing, so last year we did camp in a box and it was, it was good. Uh, this year we kind of stepped it up and did an activity pass. Uh, and what we did was the Forage Foundations and Forage Leaders Associations in Berkeley, Jefferson, and Morgan put money together. And we offered every kid that signed up, two hundred and sixty-three regular forage members and about fifty-seven pleather buds. Um, gave them the opportunity to go to River Riders, J D's Family Fund Center, um, do the new bikes down at Black Dome Coffee. There were six things total. Um, rent the paddle boat, rent the cape bin, get STEM kits from Inspired Chaos. Uh, but allowed them to do all that for free. Uh, and that was kind of our biggest thing. We brought in about $9,000 in donations to be able to offer that program. Um, but in total, we had roughly over a hundred and fifteen complete some of the activities, so.
So, Camp Frame is just sitting there getting over?
No, so Camp Frame is, can be rented, um, privately because it is, it's a entity. It doesn't fall into the realm of the U. So, it's actually been booked for weddings. They actually just had a grand camp for, I believe, Washington or Jefferson, one or two. Uh, so it's, it's been privately rented, but we could not rent it for residential camp.
I used to live out that way and, you know, you could always tell in Camp Frame, especially Band Camp, because you could hear the drums banging away, you know. And, uh, but I don't live out there anymore, so.
You might still hear them. It never, you know, surprises me. Uh, we were able to hold some day camps. Um, it's just that Fair Night piece, we're not allowed to kind of have yet. Um, we're looking for new sets of rules to come out, the eighteenth of September, but then with the new variant, we haven't really gotten, um, a new set of protocols.
As soon as the state fair is over, you know, that's what we set of protocols.
That, that's what we're expecting as well. We were very lucky that a Berkeley County Fair got to happen with that.
And that, that fair really happened. I mean, that was jamming.
We put a lot of effort into making sure that this year was, you know, the tip-top that it could be. Worked a lot with the health department to make sure everything we did was kosher. Uh, a lot of plans went up to the U to get the okay. Kids were in the brand kids sold. That's the, you know, the culmination of the whole week is to make sure those kids can sell market animals as well as exhibit their projects.
There's market animals went for good prices.
They did. It was the second highest sale we've had in the last decade.
Yeah.
So, five hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty.
Is that right?
So, we had some really phenomenal buyers coming in. Uh, you know, it, it truly, I know this is off-topic compared to C V B, but it truly is amazing, the level, the level of support that we have for local businesses, or U.
It all ties back to C V B.
It does. It does in a, a long way, but I was happy last, I was happy that last week was able to happen. And we had some record number of attendance as well.
Yeah.
Uh, Friday night, we ran out of parking.
I was just talking about that this morning.
Was not necessarily prepared for that, but it happened. We dealt, did as best we could. Uh, but it was definitely kind of a, it was a great way to end a kind of crappy year.
I told them I left there at seven o'clock on Friday night and they were backed up from the fair, Clear Pass, Flags Crossing.
Yes. Uh, we had people that said that they parked at the industrial park on Great Island Walk Day.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, amazed, kind of shocked, but happy that it happened.
Hmm. All right, Vice President Whitaker.
Michael, I don't really have a whole lot of questions to ask you. I mean, we, we get to see you come in here and give reports with, uh, I mean, oh gosh, extension, extension office, I'm sorry. And, uh, I think it would be a great fit for the C V B and, and add another element of, of. And I think it would be a great fit for the C V B and add another element of, of design to it. So I think, I think the youth is, is, is one of the key factors for that, and I think you have your hand on that pretty good, so.
Council President Goode.
Yes, sir. Michael, your enthusiasm that you, you bring to the podium is contagious. It's, it's great. The C V B is, is my understanding, you, you, there's a lot of different players. And to be able to bring you into that mix, to join it all, hopefully with your experiences, to join it all back together, to broaden everybody's abilities to get better, I welcome that. And, you know, from the Main Street, you know, to the Roundhouse, to landmarks, Parks and Rec, you know, everybody plays a role in that. So I welcome you, you know, and thank you for coming before us and looking for some great opportunities here. Thank you.
Michael, I just really don't have any questions. More of a statement, I think the C V B does play an important role in Berkeley County, naturally, and it seems like, you know, every time we turn around another organization or in the county government and the city government is starting to work more and more into making Berkeley County and the city of Martinsburg a better place. And C V B is, plays a very important role in that, in creating activities and creating things for people to do. People just have to find the time to enjoy it, you know? So another big event this, this weekend, there's brews and barbecue, you know? Just be great to be able to go, and should be a good weekend.
It should.
So thank you for your commitment to Berkeley County and especially the youth, and, well, Mr. Delia is not here. I don't know where he went, but we'll, we'll see, we'll see you soon.
That works. Thank you all very much.
All right, thank you. Well, he can just stay there now, because now we don't have another one until ten forty-five. So I guess we don't have Mr. Davis that doesn't have anything, so I guess we'll have to take another break.
Eddie, would you like to fill in fifty minutes?
All right, we're back in session. Next on our agenda is a board and commission interview with Paul Wolverton, candidate for historical landmarks. Paul, how you doing this morning?
I'm doing good.
Great. Can you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to apply for a position on, on the historical landmarks, please?
Okay, about myself, I'm a retired school psychologist from up in Washington County. I'm also a certified lit pastor, commissioned lit pastor in a Presbyterian church. I served out of Pommahawk, down at Bunker Hill, and now I'm at Little Falls Presbyterian up on the left. I started at the Morgan Cabin Committee shortly after I moved to the county back in nineteen eighty-five. And I served as the president of the committee for about ten years before I got off the committee in two thousand and six, when things changed in how they were doing things, and I lived up in North End of County, it was in the South, that sort of thing. Recently, back the last year or two, came back on the committee again, where I'm serving this preacher now. I have an interest in older things. I have an interest in letting people know what's out there, getting people involved in it. I have an interest in older things. I have an interest in letting people know what's out there, getting people involved in it. I think there should be more committees like the Morgan Cabin Group for the different ones around the county for preservation. I know when I was at Tomahawk, there's a very old cemetery there that's still in use. My committee was formed while I was a pastor there, took care of it, rehabilitated it, fixed things up, went out and made a list of every stone, who's there, and how to find them, and so on. I think things like that should be happening, and I think, from what I understand, landmarks would be involved in that sort of work. Getting signs up and so forth, letting people know where things are and how to find them. I'm just at that point where I think I ought to be contributing more back into the county.
Good. Thank you.
That's my man.
All right. All right, Mr. Barnhart.
Being an Old Hedgesville boy myself, there's... As you travel through Hedgesville, so many of the old things are long gone, torn down, and there's nothing there to remind people, you know, Reiner's Shop. If you're familiar with Reiner's Shop, which is right there between James Rumsay and Hedgesville High School. Mount Clifton, the old hotel in Hedgesville, that was famous. They, trains would stop at North Mountain, and they truck them into Mount Clifton. You know, that sort of stuff is gone and almost getting forgotten.
And the Tomahawk Spring itself?
Yeah, well, the Hedgesville Spring, Tomahawk Spring, the old picnic grounds at the Sulphur Springs. So Bennington, Inwood, all those places, you know, they're gone, and there's nothing to remind people that they were there. And it's important for the, as far as Berkeley County goes. Somebody has to, you know, remind people of where these things were. And it seems that you're into that. And of course, me and you, as we get older, we do appreciate old things.
We hope other people do too, right?
Well, you know, I experienced the old thing, you know, Reiner's Shop was there when I was a kid.
Yeah, see, I don't remember that one. But then again, I wasn't out in Hedgesville at that time either.
Yeah, that was very familiar to all of us kids before Rumsay was built. In fact, I used to make hay in all those fields where Dylan's farm was. You know, I made hay in all those fields. I pruned the apple trees that were there at the old national, the BBNT bank.
Right.
You know, it's...
You actually did work at one time?
I actually, from about 15 years old on, yeah, I made hay at fifty cents an hour and appreciated it.
Yeah.
So I applaud your interest in the history of Berkeley County and landmarks.
Thank you.
Mr. Delia.
Thank you for applying and coming in here and offering your expertise and your time. Obviously, time is of value, and it's of value to our community as well. I also applaud the effort because we're living in a world where people want to tear down statues and things, reminders of the past, and there needs to be people out there that are working towards keeping that side up so that we can remember what it was like one time. So, thank you.
Vice President Whitaker.
Thank you for wanting to give back your time. I know time is valuable for families and things, but, you know, for you to give back time for Berkeley County, because that makes me feel like Berkeley County is your family. So, thank you for that. And, you know, I gotta admit, Little Falls there in Falling Waters, I knew it was there, but I never took time to stop by, but I finally did. It's been a couple of years ago since I was there. That is a beautiful little setting. And, you know, you probably see it a whole lot more than what I do, but...
Every Sunday.
Every Sunday. And people should, if they would just take about five minutes, pull down in there and take a look.
Well, you know, there's, up from that, there used to be watercres.
Crest ponds, yeah.
Yeah, up there.
That's still there.
Yeah, the crest ponds are still there.
Well, I've actually, I've actually seen a lot of stuff on social media where people are chasing people out of there that stop in there to check out the Falling Waters waterfall and telling them it's private property and they're not allowed in that area.
Really?
Yeah.
Now, that's down over the hill. Where's the church up on the top?
Up there by eleven.
Yeah.
Yes.
The brick church.
Yeah.
There's little chapels down.
Correct, yeah, little white chapel that's right there along eleven, yeah. But anyway, I just, you know, every time I hear about Little Falls, that's the first thing I think. I exited with mom and dad, and we went down in there and took a look at it. And I don't think, as long as they were allowed, I don't think they'd ever stop just to really take a look at it. And we spent some time there. But again, thank you for wanting to devote your time back to this community.
The last time I wanted to read a little bit about history about their Falling Waters was on the other side, over on the Maryland side, and where they had the floating pontoon boats across during the Civil War.
Okay.
Floating Pontoon Bridge, I'm sorry. And that's when I hit the brakes, my wife went over the handlebars on her bike, so what... You know, that's how, that's how history...
Whose fault was that?
It was that burn sign.
You know, so I am interested in history. Unfortunately, it was a bad day for me.
Yeah. You create a little bit of history there, don't you?
Counselperson Gokener.
Yes, sir. I also want to thank you, you know, for applying for this. You know, we do have currently one opening on there, and we do have several applicants that have shown interest in applying. But originally, I was looking for a person that would come to landmarks with a wide open view, a broad view of landmarks, and at the same time be able to serve perhaps as a liaison to the Morgan Cabin Association to keep a line of communication open and just establish a good working relationship with those two agencies. You know, I know that currently, the last time I spoke to Todd, you know, there's about 160 graveyards that are registered, you know, through landmarks that someone are being challenged, you know, with growth as some developers may in fact go in and destroy some unknowingly, and some are not that, quite that way. But I do thank you for showing your interest in also the work that you've done with that cabin association. Had it not been for that group, that cabin would have been in total ruin. But thank you all for saving that part of our very important issue.
Paul, I don't have any questions for you, same as everybody else. I think the biggest thing about this, Jim's right. You know, the older we get, the more we think about history. And it does seem like, you know, back when I was in high school, I didn't need to know about the past. But I find history to be very exciting and something very important. So I want to thank you for applying today for the position, and we'll make a decision here in the near future, okay?
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for listening to me and having me here.
Thank you for your time.
Have a good day.
All right. All right, next on our agenda is Jennifer Piercey, Executive Director of the County Commission Association in West Virginia. We're going to talk about some legislative priorities and things, and basically talk about, see where your alignments are, what your board's thinking about, and all that stuff, Jennifer. It's good to have you in Berkeley County. We've been gone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you all so much for having me. I really appreciate it on the hottest day of the year.
Yeah.
But that's okay.
Hey, it's good to be inside, right?
Yes, it is. It's very good to be inside.
All right.
So again, thank you all very much for having me. Our association met at our annual meeting. The way that we put together our legislative platform is we have a legislative committee that meets, and then we take suggestions from all of our counties. And then the legislative committee gets together and meets, and then they make a recommendation based on topics and areas that we want to focus on, they recommend that to our board of directors, and that's adopted. Now, we used to do this in the fall, and two years ago, it was brought to our attention that we probably need to start a little bit earlier in the year. It provides more time to write your legislation, if that's necessary, if it's not already drafted. It also allows more time to have conversations and to reach out to potential sponsors of that legislation. So starting last year, we backed that process up, and we actually do it in conjunction with our annual meeting, which is typically anywhere from the end of July to early August. So some things, and I've actually provided each of you a folder that has the legislative priorities outlined. We typically run up with what Berkeley County does in terms of major issues such as the 1% sales tax, the rollback, legal notices. One big issue that came up this year, obviously, which is quite recent with the Perdian. The number one priority on that sheet has to do with putting together something in a statute that would create a committee. Right now, there actually is an interim committee that deals with regional issues. They've only met one time. When they did meet, it happened to be around the same time that the Perdian cap was going to expire. They've extended that for one year until July 1 of 2022. However, there have been several discussions with representatives that the entire system needs to be addressed because it's just not working for counties at all. So we are hoping to get that drafted. We did have a commissioner from Cabo County who previously served in the legislature who has offered to help facilitate this process, so that's something that we're looking at. Obviously, the 1%, which I know is a huge, that's your number one priority, even assuming for Berkeley County.
Right. I think, you know, a local, here in Berkeley County, we're not capturing anybody coming in to our county. Eighty-some thousand cars going up and down 81 every day. And really, in the long run, this would lighten the burden of the local taxpayers. I mean, it's, and I know that I just went down recently, I talked to some of us about a local tax in Frederick County, Virginia. I stop at a fast food restaurant, and the local tax is higher than the state tax. It's 4.3%. So everybody around us, it seems like, appears to be that they do have a local sales tax. And, but we don't. And what happens is, part of your legislative agenda is that unfunded mandates. We're being mandated to do more of the work that the state always has with no funding.
Correct.
Prime example is the state police. Our state police barracks is so understaffed, it's, they're probably a third of where they need to be. So guess who has to absorb that? Our sheriff's department. Who funds the sheriff's department? We do. You know, so it just, it just seems like, you know, they're putting more on us without no additional funding.
And when we discuss the 1% at our annual meeting, this tied directly into the issue of home rule. Not, you know, in the past, the way that this bill has always been presented is that it's permissive only. If you're a county that wants to do it, do it. Because there are counties that have no desire to. However, there needs to be a degree of flexibility and some sort of home rule for counties. So for example, if you're at Tucker County where Cane Valley is, they don't necessarily want a 1%, but they would actually like to implement an amusement tax on the folks that come to Cane. Their reasoning is, like where you have the issue with the state police here, they have issues with EMS services. They have about 5,000 people in that county, but between November and March, it swells to anywhere from 12 to 15. But they still are responsible for providing medical services and things of that nature to all of those folks who are there. And I think in other counties, you have some of the same issues. But there needs to be, again, flexibility. What would you use the 1% for? I do know that there has been some conversations about allowing some sort of home rule-ability for counties. However, this past year during session, what we saw was there was a real push towards challenging the authority of municipalities and with municipal home rule. There were several bills introduced, but about halfway through session, what ended up happening was when they introduced the elimination of the personal income tax, that took precedent the last part of session, and pretty much everything else was tabled.
Oh, yeah.
But we really want to, and that's one thing is, it was very confusing last year during session because it seemed like that there were some things that they challenged in terms of home rule for cities and counties, but then there were some things, such as Senate Bill 12, wanting counties and county commissions and county councils to approve health department rules. Well, that seemed to bring the control back. So it's a little bit confusing in terms of exactly what the intent is.
Well, there seems to be an effort by Charleston for regionalization too, which I'm a little confused about because, you know, one day it's this agency, the next day it's the other agency, and, you know, it's... Where is it?
Well, there's, you know, one of, and we say this all the time, you know, we have, we don't compete with the rest of state.
Correct.
And with that problem is, we have to pay higher wages here in order to get employees. We have to, everything that comes along with it, you know? And we have to do that here in order to, in order to compete north and south of us. And with DC, the rest of the state doesn't have that problem. But absolutely, I can see where they have an issue with EMS. When, you know, Pocahontas County, probably the same thing.
I was gonna say, yeah, it's no shit.
Yeah, when you have a large population come in, you still gotta take care of it. It's not fair to put that on the taxpayers' back to handle that issue. So there's gotta be some type of flexibility to counties to be able to implement some of these things that they need to do to take care of their community and remain competitive.
And Eddie, you know Interstate 81, we spend most of our time out there for EMS and fire, and don't get a cent for it, you know? With no sales tax, no nothing. I mean, it's huge for us.
I noticed this morning, I have a friend that lives up here, and I went to eat with her for breakfast, and we went to two different places that only the drive-throughs were open because they can't open the dining rooms because they don't have enough people to work.
Exactly. Yeah, I mean...
State Department of Highways, they had a job fair, and I don't know if anybody attended, they were offering $13 an hour. You gotta be kidding me now.
Yeah, up here, it's getting very, very competitive. And that's a good thing. I mean, we want to bring up the wages of West Virginia residents, right? We gotta be competitive. We don't want to be at the bottom of the list. And I think the other thing, going back to the sales tax, I mean, one time, you know, we talked about sales tax, and they, you know, you always hear, "Well, we're not gonna raise any sales tax." Well, you know, if you're gonna give us the responsibility that the state's always done, like DEP's responsibilities rolled over to our engineering department, and it's rolled over to this, now we have a stormwater sewer district with no funding, we have, which, that put on to the locals as well, as a fee. Then, as I said something to Senator Blair, then just lower your 6% sales tax to 5% and give us 1%.
Right.
You know, if you're gonna give us the, you know, if we're gonna have to hire the state, or county sheriff's department, it's gonna have to increase their staff because state police is so understaffed. And no fault of the local dispatch, you know, it's, it's, it's not their fault, right? But so, but if we're gonna do that, then we need funding to do it. And I think the easy way to do it is, if we're gonna do the job, then if you don't want to raise tax, just give us 1% of yours.
The state's benefiting from what we do here. I mean, we're creating industry, more industry here in the Panhandle, and those employment tax are going back to the state. The current sales tax are going back to the state. For, in order for us to keep doing it, we gotta be able to pay for some of these things, and it can't all go back to the state.
Right. There's an article in each of your folders that, when I was at the NACO conference last month, there was a breakout session that dealt with locality issues, and one of them was taxation. So there's an article in there that was done by the Pew Charitable Trust about the importance, and there's an emphasis on allowing local government to have the authority to implement taxation just because of a range of different issues, and there's some case studies in there from different states about what they used the funding for when they did go into taxing. when they did go into taxing.
Yeah, and our, our thing is too, I mean, we could use all of ours for public safety without, I mean, it's, it's that, that's how much we, we could put focus on public safety. And not put it on the, as Dan said, not put it on the, don't get me wrong, the locals are gonna be paying the sales tax too, but we should be able to, to help them out in a different way.
And you can't have people keep moving in here to connect with our services.
Right.
You have to have a backend built as much as they run it. Because I think in other areas, in the southern part of the state, there's issues with outdoor recreation and public safety because there's, there's an emphasis on these trail systems and things like that. And in some of these counties, you don't have any EMS built in.
Well, we're 50% behind on, on outdoor recreation and quality of life, we call it. So, we're trying to work hard on that too, Jennifer. But I, I think the one thing that, that the association has and will continue to do, I'm sure, is that Berkeley County is leading the way in the whole state of West Virginia. We're seeing, we're in the top 10 counties in the nation of growth again for our size. And, you know, so some of the things that we do up here, you know, I, I remember one of the meetings that, that we had with the County Commission Association, that I was on the state committee and I wasn't a board member at that point in time because Tim pointed me to the board, which I told him I wouldn't be able to give him any time. So, was our, our paid firefighters.
Right.
And at that time, no one was interested because they didn't have that situation. Since then, there's been eight counties reach out to us and say, how are y'all doing this? We need to know. And, right, at least eight now. So, if, if we're able to get some traction for the things that we need, there are so many different counties that could benefit, growing counties, that could benefit for what we, what we're paving the road. You know what I mean?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
Jennifer, I think one of the things that challenges us is the one-size-fits-all approach to our state laws and.
Right.
It, it doesn't, it doesn't fit here, you know? Very, very seldom, you know, from the, from like the troopers, like they were saying, their salaries to schoolteachers, DOH employees, you know, all, all those things. A one-size-fits-for-the-whole-state, it, it doesn't work. You know, I would like to be able to say, you know, I know that, I know that we're carrying the state in a lot of ways financially, but I will also do not want to forget that before we became a growth county, that the coal industry took care of a lot of us. I understand that, I respect that and I appreciate that. So, therefore, give us some flexibility. Let's give that coal severance tax money back to, to the counties where it came from to help them grow and, and do the services that they need to be able to take care of for their people. But yet, at the same time, give us some flexibility to do what we need to do up here.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, because what's gonna work here, it's not necessarily gonna work in Clay or Logan or some of these other counties. And that's why there needs to be some degree of home rule. So, counties have the authority to figure out what the best mechanism is for them. Because if you're at Work County, a 1% is not gonna really generate that much. But there are other things that you could do, but it's just having the ability to do it and having the authority. And I think that really needs to be a focus moving forward because we saw a lot of legislation against home rule. And my big fear is, we saw a lot of different bills introduced last year during session and a lot of them had to do with elimination of different taxes. We are being told which, this is gonna lead into our next topic, which is HJR 3, which is something that we're gonna be watching very closely. HJR 3 was introduced in the House. It's a House joint resolution that it's gonna go on the ballot November 2022. And it'll be a referendum that the citizens of West Virginia vote on. If it passes, it will allow a future legislature to open up that section of code dealing with property tax, which means they can go in, they could eliminate, they could change, they could redefine. When this was introduced, the argument that we heard was, do you not want the citizens of West Virginia to have a voice? Well, we absolutely do, but we also want them to be educated on what they're voting on. We want them to understand what exactly those tax dollars pay for. So, for the next year, we're gonna be spending a lot of time educating the public on exactly what county government does, where their tax dollars go. Because in different counties, there's different programs, there's different services depending on where you live. That's something that worries us quite a bit because if there is, we, we've heard other things such as there will be another round of going after eliminating the state income, personal income tax. That's a huge chunk of general revenue. And we've always been told that if they did eliminate some of these property taxes, such as business and inventory and things like that, that they would go and backfill the counties. I just don't know where that money's gonna come from. And that's the concern. So, that's something that we're gonna be watching really closely. I think that this year, what's gonna be different about session, in my opinion, is we've spent the past couple of weeks polling bills from the past five years to look at what's been trending and what gets introduced every year and what they might come after. We're gonna try to make more of an attempt to be proactive versus reactive because that's what always seems to happen, is a bill's already passed out of one house and it's already in the other. And if you get to crunch time, the last two weeks of session, you know, some of these bills are 200 pages long.
Yeah.
There are unintended consequences sometimes with, with legislation.
You definitely have to be proactive. And, and it's a, it's a year-round job. You're constantly developing those relationships with the legislators or.
Right.
You know, as we've talked about up here, you just can't go in during session and think that you're gonna get some undivided attention. They're, they're very, very busy.
You need to be having those conversations.
Up front.
And, you know, and of course, if we wanna make things even more complicated, there's redistricting. Because I know that there's gonna be a focus on, they wanna have everything up and ready before the November 2022 election. And my understanding is, I think that those maps are supposed to be out sometime late fall because I think that you can go ahead and file come January of 2022. So, that's gonna be another hurdle is the re-education in folks' districts because a lot of your representatives may change. So, if you don't have an existing relationship with them already, that's gonna be yet something else that needs to be established. Which I know up here, you all have a very good relationship with all of your local electeds. I know in some of our areas, that is very lacking.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Well, that's the only way to get anything done, is to sit down and have that conversation and, and allow them to help solve the problem.
Right. I know that after the issue came out with the per diem, I did get some phone calls from some delegates who said that they had absolutely no idea. So, and based on conversations that we had with DMAP regarding this entire situation, we feel like what happened was there was legislation that was introduced that was supposed to address this at the beginning of session. And it somehow, I think, got lost in the shuffle. And we were told that regarding the per diem, they didn't have to notify counties. And I think that it was a combination of the per diem hasn't been raised since 2013. There wasn't really a mechanism in place on exactly what the process is, like how do the, who calculates it? Because when I sent the initial article out, there wasn't, there was, you know, I think it was 14% was the number. However, when we went back to DMAP, they said, well, we don't know where that number came from because we don't calculate it. That's the state budget office. So, there was a lot of confusion and my goal was to, number one, get that capped for another year. But then, number two, that's why these conversations need to be held is no one, it, it kinda felt like everyone was, there was a lot of blame going on around the table. The situation just needs to be addressed. So, hopefully, that is something between getting something in statute to have some, some committee with representation on there from all invested parties that can address the regional jail issue. I know that we've had, I've been in several meetings with the auditor's office and they feel like that it needs to be addressed as well, which is helpful. Because I think that we would like to start having conversations with them about ways that we can get this addressed. Because if they even, even if that would have raised 14%, I think that there's nine or 10 counties right now that are behind. That would have doubled or tripled for some counties. So, that's something that's absolutely gonna have to be addressed.
Yeah.
Jennifer, what do you think the success of eliminating that property rollback, what's the flavor?
Um, well, you know, that bill was introduced every year. And I think the biggest hurdle with that bill is explaining it to people because they don't understand.
They don't understand.
They don't. They don't understand it. And I think that that's where our role is, is to educate. Cindy Wetzel, who's the administrator in Lewis County, she actually has put together, it's a very easy graphic that explains it, that we hope to use this year during session where we can just explain, this is the impact that it has. And again, you know, this won't affect every county, but there are some counties it would make a major impact.
It's major for us.
Yeah.
I mean, and, and the easy thing about this is, is that, you know, the, the taxes can drop. There's no floor in it. It can drop like we've seen during the recession.
Right.
You know, we lost two, two-thirds of our value. Well, the problem is now, our value's back and actually probably exceeding the pre-recession. And we can only gain back 3% a year and the successor gets 2% of that. So, it's only, you know, it's.
Right.
Trying to gain that 66% that we lost at 1% a year, you can't keep up with inflation.
Well, we're hoping that, we're in the process of scheduling regional roundtables like we did previously. And then, we've been, we've been able to communicate a little bit better this year with the legislators in terms of sending them specific examples and different things like that. So, we're hoping with the regional roundtables, that'll also give us a chance to explain to them what the, what the rollback is and why it's so important to counties. And hopefully too, where our agendas are already established, we can start putting that information out there now because that's probably gonna be key.
Have you had any conversations with Senator Trump about?
No, not yet.
He probably, of, of any of the folks that we deal with, he probably has the best understanding.
Okay.
Of that. And I know that he, in years past, has agreed to introduce the legislation to, to address this.
Okay.
So, you may wanna have some early conversations.
Okay. Because I think, I think that you all, your, your redistricting meeting.
Tuesday night.
Tuesday night? Okay. Also, there are two items on our legislative platform that talk about things we support. One of them is Tucker County is gonna try to introduce the amusement tax again. It actually did get some traction last year. However, when it was in the Senate, when we were in committee, the question came up, who would be responsible for the monies that came in? And I think that there was a question about whether or not county commissions could handle that, which didn't make a lot of sense to me at the time because it was running around the same time as Senate Bill 12. So, I didn't understand how they felt, they had confidence in your ability to make health decisions, but not manage.
Right.
Tax dollars. But we're hoping that some of these counties that are, they're mainly focused on tourism, like the Pocahontas and the Tucker, that will be able to do that. And then, the other thing that we will support that the board voted on was, we believe that there's gonna be another bill introduced again for salary increases. We are, that our position as the association is, we will support it if it's the mechanism bill, which was introduced a couple of years ago. I think the one last year was the straight 10% across the board. But the mechanism bill gives the authority back, it's back down to the county level, which we feel would help a great deal. So, that's what we wanna be focused on is we can support that legislation if it's tied to the mechanism.
Yeah.
You have any questions for me?
No, it just, it just seems like it's a, it's always busy, busy trying to get things to improve upon our community. I think one of the things is, that I say is, it's, sometimes you look at how small the tax bill can be to improve upon your community, if that's a fair statement. But in reality, it's not how little we pay, it's what value do we get from what we do pay? Because if you find around here, the, the counties that do better and does it better with quality of life and stuff, they pay much higher taxes than what we have to, here in West Virginia and Berkeley County, right? But, but they're okay with that because of the, the value they get, you know? And so, if you look at how, you know, the tax revenue versus the, the quality of life and where we rate nationally, you know, they're, they're very close together.
Yes.
And, and so, I, I think you gotta look at the value.
Well, you know, one of the, one of the things that really amazes me is that we haven't solved the issue that, which, which seems to me like one of the easiest things that should, could be accomplished is creating, creating a way to, to audit for hotel motel tax. You know, I mean, this is, you know, if you get an audit if you don't pay your income tax, right? I mean, if, why would there not be a mechanism to, and, and some of these things you can just basically look at and find without auditing and say, you know what, this place is this size and it's only paying this much? How is that possible when everybody's 90%, you know, renting out those type of things? So, some of it is, you can look at it in common sense as, there's gotta be something different going on here. But you don't have a mechanism to actually look at it and make sure that everybody's doing. And sometimes, that's all it takes. You don't even have to go through the process. If they know there's a mechanism, then they're gonna pay a little more attention to making sure they've got good, clean records to make sure that they can prove what they're doing.
That's what was happening with the, the VRBOs.
Right.
And, and all that, you know? They, basically, they would pull somebody out from the office and they would sit there and get on the site and pull out all the properties and send somebody out and say, you're not paying your, your local tax. Now, that, and that bill did, you know, finally get passed this session. There were some issues the year before, that's why it got vetoed. There were technical issues the state tax department had. And I will tell you that the argument that we keep hearing, that we've heard time and time again about having a county 1% is the state tax department. Because our, the way that the localities are set up, we are not like on a GIS system like other states are. It's by zip code. And so, you can live in a zip code, but you technically don't live in the city. But you might still be, you know, charged a tax. It's, it goes back to that. So, we wanted to have conversations with the state tax department about, we don't wanna hear why you can't do it. Let's just go in and fix it. Let's figure out a way to do it.
So, we're being penalized for another thing that the state's not able to do.
Correct. It's something that we can't control.
But we, Jennifer, we even told our local legislators, our IT department can handle that. I mean, we're, we're unlike most of the counties in the state of West Virginia. So, if you wanna use us as a pilot and we'll be in charge of collecting the one cent sales tax and we'll be able to do all the auditing and stuff like that. So, that, that kinda fell to the side. But Berkeley County is growing. It, it needs more funding to be able to keep up with the, everything that's going on and to continue to, to, to allow the state of West Virginia to prosper. to continue to, to allow the state of West Virginia to prosper, right? But we need, we need more attention.
Yes.
And, so, anybody else have anything?
I guess other counties, some of us would be, Monegalia.
Yes.
Harrison, maybe?
Yeah, Harrison. I mean, even a little bit of Lewis because last year, when the annexation bill passed, and so now, we don't have to deal with that as much. Like, Lewis County would benefit a great deal, especially with, I don't know if you've driven down in that area recently, but they've been doing work on I-79 where they're improving the exit through there, and that's basically the start of corridor H. So, you have a lot of people getting off in that area, and there's Walmart, there's a Shee, there's a bunch of restaurants. I mean, they, I know that they have an interest in it. I'm sure Cabell would have an interest in it, so...
Mm-hmm.
And that might be something that maybe this fall, that we have a discussion about, like, let's bring in those counties that have that similar interest, to have a discussion about that.
Mm-hmm.
What the state needs to do is give the local electives the authority, and let's use the 1% sales tax. You know, don't mandate it across the state.
Right.
Give the local electives the authority and the discretion to implement. Then if the local taxpayers don't like what they do, then vote them out.
That's right.
You know, to me, that's an easy decision for the state to make.
Well, and it's, that's essentially what they did with Senate Bill 12.
Right.
You know, if you don't like what your county council folks or your county commissioners are approving in terms of health department rules, you answer at the election.
Right. So, they've gotta get out of that paternalistic mindset with these folks.
Well, you're elected just like everybody else is.
Well, I'm not.
Well, not you.
But...
But they are. They're elected just like everyone.
They would run Charleston, the way that these five run Burke County, we'd be in a hell of a lot better shape right now. And I know they won't admit it publicly, but I think privately, they understand that Burke's need to make rest of the state.
Yes.
All right, Jennifer, it's good to see you.
Thank you for having me.
Unfortunately.
Trying not to be a stranger.
Yeah.
Well, I actually, I actually have some other, a lot of my friends are moving away, and I actually have another set of friends that just recently moved this way.
See?
They're all coming here.
All right, but, and, you know, we always say every year that we need to spend more time in Charleston and stuff like that. It's just so hard for us.
Well, and I think it goes both ways.
Yeah, I mean, it's just so hard, so... But anyway, thank you for making the trip. Be safe.
Well, you're welcome. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, we don't have any reason for executive session, I don't believe, right?
Sure, we have enough.
All right. Any items from the public? Mr. Bentley, you got any items from the public?
I do not.
You don't?
You're a public now. I don't know what you do.
All right. Need a motion to recess.
Mr. President, I'm ready to recess.
We are recessed.
We are done?
That worked out perfectly.
Yeah.
That's the time I needed to get...